Welcome to the Berlin Select Board Open Meeting. Today is Monday, June 24th. This is an open public session. Meetings are subject to being recorded. Your image and/or voice will be recorded. As I stated earlier, we are just on Zoom tonight. There is no hybrid, so if people pop into the meeting as not an attendee, we will do our best to figure this out. All right, calling the meeting to order at 6:32. There are no approval of the minutes, so we will carry those over into our next meeting, which will be July 15th. We start our summer calendar. So we will go right down to our next item, which is general public comment.
Good job, selectmen.
[applause]
Thank you for that. Awesome, general public comment. We appreciate that. All right. Look at that, we're just a wee bit behind. We have a public hearing for the all-pouring liquor license, common victular, mechanical entertainment and regular and Sunday entertainment licenses, Ex-Golf at Highland Commons, which I assume are you gentlemen?
Yep.
All right. If you want to, yeah, come up there, but yell, because we only have, so this will be an opportunity for you to pretend that, yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Presentation for you guys.
Dee, is there anything on the public hearing meeting? Yes, okay. All right, right there.
Yeah, that's right. It can go on the record then.
All right. So before you start.
Sure.
XG Hudson LLC doing business as Ex-Golf Hudson, 48 Highland Commons, Unit 1205, Berlin, Mass. 01503, has applied to the Berlin Select Board for an on-premise Section 12 Restaurant All-Pouring License. Brian McClellan, manager. Hopefully I didn't ruin your name. Thank you. This license will be exercised at 48 Highland Commons, Unit 1205, Berlin. The premises are described as follows. A single-story with approximately 6,300 square feet, having an open floor plan, which includes nine golf simulators placed on opposing walls with a small bar and kitchen in the middle of the space. There is one entrance and one exit. The public hearing is held tonight before the Select Board regarding this matter, Monday, June 24th, 2024, at approximately 6:30 in the Town Offices Building, second floor, Room 227 at 23 Highland Street, Berlin, Mass., and via Zoom. Written and oral comments from the public will be accepted before and/or during this hearing. Are we good?
Yep, just a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All right, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is open. Thank you, gentlemen, for being patient. All right. So if you can introduce yourself, give us a little bit of background on this. I'm sure we'll have tons of questions for you.
Yeah, sure. So thanks for the time tonight, guys. So my name is Brian McClellan. This is Tim Bedoria. He's one of our business partners, one of the owners, and Manu Kozkent is an owner also. And just behind me is Andrew Stark. He's our Regional Director. So yeah, so we're hoping to open Ex-Golf in Berlin. It's an indoor golf simulator business. We currently have three. One in Lincoln, Rhode Island, one in Walpole, Mass., and one in Hanover, Mass. They're in operation for about three years. Business is going great, so we're expanding. We thought Berlin is a great spot to go to. The retail center up the street looks really good, so that's our plan now. But anyway, Ex-Golf is an indoor golf business, so we'll have nine golf simulators. So typically, customers come into it to either hit on the driving range, play in leagues, or just regular indoor golf simulator play. We'll have a full bar and a small kitchen. Yep. So I would say, so Ex-Golf is a franchise, has roughly 125 locations across the country. It is growing pretty fast, and like I said, this will be our fourth location. And it's been great for us. It's a bit of a seasonal business where the summer is relatively quiet unless it's rain, and then the winter is very busy. So I think in the deck, so there's some information in the deck. The first slide kind of just talks about like an overview of what the business is. The second slide is pretty good. It shows some of the highlights about the business. So like I said, we'll have nine simulators in the store. We'll be open Saturday to Sunday, or yes, Saturday to Sunday, seven days a week. Typical operating hours are from 9:00 to 10:00, with some extended hours on Friday and Saturday night. Typically open during the peak season until around 11:00 or 12:00 a.m. We price our rentals by the hour, not by the person, so it's relatively affordable. And again, we'll have like, you know, full bar and some smaller food offerings for the customers. And this next slide is pretty good. This shows a layout of the Berlin location, where we'll have the nine simulators, four on each opposing walls, and then one in the back with a bar and kitchen kind of in the middle, right when you walk into the store for check-in. In the top right is just kind of an example layout, just so you can see like kind of a 3D view of what some of the other locations look like. But most of the business is centered around the actually playing in the simulators. In the bar and the kitchen is more secondary or a convenience for the customers. We have a sample menu in here that shows some of the food that we'll be offering. It's generally pizza, wings, some light appetizers. And then there's also some like, you know, golf-themed cocktails and mixed drinks, as well as craft beer and regular domestic. Yeah, and the only thing we would say is, you know, Ex-Golf, it is, we are a franchise. It's a great indoor golf business. It's very accurate, and we found our other three locations that the customers really enjoy playing. Do you guys have any questions?
No, we didn't have, sorry.
We have a technical difficulty. People on Zoom cannot hear. I'm just trying to load it up right now.
Is that, we're too far from?
Probably.
I was going to say, you may have to go up to one of your mics. It's not.
Oh, do we have, oh, are these mics for us?
No, the one that green, that green button.
But they can't even hear you, and you're right there, so.
That's odd.
I know. I'm recording, and I've unmuted mine. My volume is all the way up. How about yours, Peg?
How about if I?
This is just.
That's where.
Is this on?
Yes, here it is.
I can hear you guys, but there's an echo.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let me turn mine off. It's muted. Okay, try, try.
It's weird. We're not able to read Chris.
I don't think, I don't think, we can kick you out of the meeting. All right, so Kristen, Chris just shut hers down because there was an awful echo. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
No. Kidding, kidding.
I can't hear very well.
Okay, I can hear you. There's no echo anymore. Thank you.
All right, is that better? Can you hear? Kristen, can you say something again?
Yes, can you hear me?
That's better.
All right, Chris is better. Okay, so.
Excellent.
All right, so apologies, apologies. We're not certainly going.
No problem.
We're not going to make you redo your presentation.
We'll take turns.
Oh, wow. All right, now I definitely need to go and watch. Are you all going to be all on site at the same time? Because this could be fun. All right. Yes, go ahead.
When do you, assuming, you know, things align, when are you expecting to open?
Yeah, so I think we're trying to open towards the end of October.
Okay.
That's our plan. So we're hoping to start construction as soon as possible, and work towards the end of October to open.
And then, I don't have the suite numbers memorized at the mall. It's sort of about where are you in the mall? First floor, second floor?
It's the Fit Factory at 110.
Oh, Highland Commons, sorry. I had the wrong mall.
You were on the wrong side of town.
Highland Commons, okay.
Yep.
But up there, okay.
So the application is for the following licenses. We have an all-pouring restaurant license, a common victular license, a weekday entertainment, and a Sunday entertainment. We have a few outstanding matters, that there are some food and building permits and some department feedback, correct?
Correct.
All right. Do we have any ETA when we will get those back? And do we need to put them back on, put this back on the calendar?
No, I think because of the location, so far, all the feedback has been positive.
Okay.
The lead inspection, those types of things, so I think that's okay.
Okay. So for outstanding, so the hours, you're asking for Monday through Sunday hours from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
Roughly, yes. And I think during the peak season, we'd extend hours from on Friday and Saturday night to about midnight.
All right, so Dee was kind enough to put a please note. Massachusetts State's law states that Section 12 licenses cannot be barred from serving alcohols between 11:00 and 12:00. The local license authority, which is us, may grant permission to extend opening hours between 8:00 and 11:00, and extend closing hours between 11:00 and 2:00. In no event can sales be made between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., 8:00 a.m. rather, so 2:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m., and no alcohol shall be served before 10:00 on Sundays.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
No problems with that?
No problem.
Okay. So if we wish to approve the licenses, we need to vote contingently on all state and/or local licenses, permits, and inspections and approvals to be obtained within the approved hours of Monday, Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and no alcohol to be served prior to 10:00 a.m. on Sundays.
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
That was easy.
I know. That'd be a great addition.
See, this is what helps when Dee like lines all this stuff up for us. So any other questions? Any questions, since this is a public hearing? Anybody?
No. I hope you'd be a nice addition to the mall.
Nice, all right, we got a thumbs up from the back, okay.
Even if I had the wrong mall in my brain.
I've gone to the simulators before, and they are absolutely fantastic. And the nice thing is, is that when you slice it, you walk over three feet, you pick the ball back up, and you do it again. So.
Well, this gives it, it's an R or T, so it actually comes from the floor, and you don't even have to walk.
You don't even have to bend over to put your ball on it.
Seriously?
It'll go for you. You just hit a button with your glove.
October, really?
Well, we're probably.
As I said, it's slow during the summer months. You wouldn't open it until during the slow.
Yeah, this is true. This is true. Okay, so no questions besides the thumbs up from the back? Any other questions from the board? Comments? Good?
It's not, it's not like my golf solitaire visit on my phone.
No, no. Although if you went for food and drink, they wouldn't stop you from playing golf right there on your phone.
This is true. Oh, yeah. This is true. All right, so we have a motion and a second somewhere in all this mess. No other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Welcome to Berlin.
Yep. Thanks so much, guys. One thing we would say is Dee was super helpful through that.
Yay. Yay.
Definitely keep us posted. We'll do something probably about a grand opening, you know, for us. Maybe all of us can show up and.
Yes, we definitely would like that.
Come in with our clubs.
Yes.
So excited. Thank you. Please reach out if you have any questions.
Appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. All right, so I will close the hearing at 6:44. All right, next up on the agenda is to discuss and vote the FY '25 through '27 Police Union MOA and contract. So gentlemen, if you would like to come on down to the front table. Come on, Eric.
Let's go.
You gotta bring your own chair, though. We only have two. Oh, what a nice guy.
Potentially talk loud so they can hear you on the mic.
That's right. All right.
Just put it over there.
All right, so Kristen, can you, are you still there?
I am.
Do you want to take us through this, since this is more your bailiwick?
Absolutely. Can you hear me all right?
You betcha.
All right, well, first, I just wanted to start off by thanking the union for a very professional and, you know, thought-provoking union negotiation. We spent a lot of time going through the contract and correcting a lot of language that really needed to be cleaned up to make things more clear for both, you know, those who are using the contract, those who are interpreting the contract, you know, everyone in fact affected by it on all sides. They were wonderful to work with, and I just want to express my sincere gratitude for, you know, just the professionalism and the willingness to work together to come up with an agreement here. So thank you very much to them, just to start. I'd like to let everybody know that the key highlights of this contract are really implementing educational incentives at levels that are making us competitive with our surrounding communities. We also did implement cost of living adjustments that are comparable with the other union contracts that we have with the fire department, which is two, two and a half, two and a half. And we did a lot of kind of language, as I mentioned, and housekeeping changes. The only other major financial items that we did was details are going up from $55 to $60. We added time and a half for holidays worked for part-time employees because they're having some challenges filling those shifts. We made a small adjustment to longevity pay, brought that down to, I believe it was 10 and 15 years, and brought it up from 700 to 900, and 900 to 1100, to basically recognize and try to retain some of our officers. And then if you look at our pay scale, we did consolidate some of the steps within the pay scale, and we added two senior steps to that pay scale as well. When we really did our market study, and we looked at surrounding communities, and we looked at a number of them, about 10 or 11, what we found across the board is that our long-term employees and our sergeants were significantly underpaid when it came to our salary schedule. Our, well, our starting rates actually were pretty well in line with surrounding communities. What was happening as folks moved on in years, we were really getting out of whack with what was happening in our competitor communities. So I'm really hoping this will help with employee retention, help keep folks, you know, staying with the town of Berlin for as long as we can. And we have some fantastic sergeants right now that I know are helping the chief tremendously. I'd love to be able to keep them on board. And those are pretty much the main financial changes. I don't know if the chief, or Chris Keith, who are also on the negotiating committee, might like to say anything.
Chief?
No, I mean, I think it is a great contract. Reminds me when I came here 28 years ago, you know, it was competitive salary, competitive wages. We really went by the wayside since about 2012, and we really fell behind in a lot of things, especially the educational incentive. You know, we're asking people who go out and spend upwards of $200,000 on a degree, and we're not going to pay you a cent for it. So, you know, when you do the math, you know, we had one gentleman that left, you know, he had $200,000 in college debt, you know, never mind a mortgage, making $55,000 here. You know, it's not going to cut it. So I think this is definitely going to bring us back into the ballpark and make us competitive with our surrounding communities.
Awesome. Chris?
Everybody was very professional. There was no yelling, screaming at the table, correct? We can fix that. It was, it was, I mean, everybody could listen, hear each other's sides, and it was, it was just a pleasure working with you guys.
Yeah, and the majority of the time was spent on polishing up the contract. Language was way outdated, like we didn't even have paternity leave or maternity leave in our contract, you know, little things like that. So, yeah, definitely addresses questionable things. If people are deciding to leave another apartment that have been there for 10 years and want to come here, they're going to get the same thing.
Awesome. Any other questions from the board?
No, I felt good.
All right, so I'm assuming, Kristen, that you need a motion to approve the Police Union MOA?
Yes, and the MOA will be subsequently inserted into the contract. So that language will literally be taken and put right in the contract. It was done in an MOA just to make it easier to see, so you didn't have to go through a 40-page contract. So I would like the vote to be to execute the MOA and then the larger contract once everything is folded into it.
So moved.
All right, so no more questions? Any questions, comments? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Well done, gentlemen, well done.
Yep.
Appreciate everything that you do. Do we need to sign anything or?
Yeah, we have a whole bunch of things to sign here.
Okay.
It does have lines for them to sign as well, if we want to do that.
Yeah, why don't we do that at least?
Yeah, if both parties could sign the MOA, that would be fantastic. And, you know, I really can't stress enough what a pain-free process it was. We had a lot of requests when it comes to languages. You see, the MOA is quite lengthy, and the union was quite open to our language changes without requesting.
You guys want to come up here, or maybe come over there?
Right in the other direction.
Awesome.
You guys can sign at first, whatever you want. I got pens or anything.
Hey, thanks.
I signed.
Oh, you already signed. Well done.
Okay.
I signed, assuming that if we didn't pass it, we could just rip it off.
You would just scratch it, you'd just scratch it out? Or is it invisible link that disappears after 20 seconds? Hello?
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
Don't do that pencil.
I told him to do it in red pen, so you know, when it copies, it doesn't come through, so it looks blank.
It'll be black.
Black, black or blue, it doesn't matter.
I'll keep it the same.
Do you feel kind, sir? Don't be messing up the order of the papers for Dee. Uh-uh. As we say, boom, chakalaka.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Come on up here. Come on.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We're going to make Eric shake our hand. You're going to shake? Oh, you don't care. Thank you.
I got you.
Well, also echo the great job that Dee did with all of this as well. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Round of applause. Yay.
Thank you, Kristen.
All right, so we are just, so if you guys want to go?
You're all good to go? You have to stand. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
So next up, at 6:40, even though it's 6:54, we're going to talk about creating an 1870 Town Hall Committee. So ladies, if you would like to come on up, speak loudly into the microphone.
Which is all the way up here. You can move it over there if you'd like.
Hello, hello, hello.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Evy, thank you so much.
And Sandra is online as well.
Oh, good, good. I'd reached out to her, but she's busy.
Yep.
Oh, good.
Do you have Sandra available online as well?
Yep.
Yep, Dee's going to move her up in a minute.
She's up.
She's up, okay.
I think she's up. Yep.
All right, so Evy, Pat, I don't know which one of you wonderful ladies would kind of like to kick us off, give us a summary?
Great, I would love to start with. Okay, so I gave you a sheet that has two sides. The front is a very draft proposal for the responsibilities of a new Town Hall Committee. The backside is a summary for those of us that don't remember what happened. I think all of us were there, but Dee wasn't there. So I can just briefly state what happened. There was a Town Hall Advisory Committee that was established in 2008 by the Select Board, and Pat and I were on that committee. There were three or four or five other people on that committee. And we worked hard to bring that building up into use because it had been condemned, and then we spent a lot of time doing that work and established policies and rental agreements and schedules and all kinds of things. So that committee worked very hard to get it to be accessible, and Pat was the instigator for that. She involved a tag, wrote the grant, and we went in front of town meeting a bazillion times. And so it's all very successful, I feel. And we sort of left it in a great, I feel, in a great position, which was very, very busy. And I think I quoted here at the end, from June to December of 2018, which was just at the end of that committee's reign, as it were, there were 168 events in that half year. And they, about 4,000 people came through and brought in $10,000. So then the committee was dissolved, and the town sort of took it over, had a manager, and then COVID hit, and it just really hasn't sort of gotten back that energy. So some of us from that old committee said, hey, we can help out. So we're here to say, we can help out. Bottom line.
So what types of things are you envisioning that would go up to the Town Hall?
So I think very much we would sort of just replicate what we did before. And in my opinion, and I don't want to just be the only one talking, but you'll chime in. I think that one of the challenges since COVID has been uneven before, but I think we sort of answered the question, is marketing. So we had actually placed the building on numerous venue sites where people look to rent a space for a party, for a concert, for a wedding, right? So we got quite a bit of activity from that. We established an independent website, which we linked to the town so that we could make the changes and promote it. I would recommend that we do that. I've had a number of theater companies approach me because they think that I'm still involved. And so I'd like to get another theater company back.
Another theater company.
Yeah, theater, we had two back then, but we could at least do at least one, not two. You know, Sandra's, I think, managed the, a lot of recreation events, and I'd like to get the contranças back in there.
Even have Japanese class that would come in, and they, you know, they teach Japanese to their kids to keep up the culture. We had a wide variety of uses for the building. So we just, we felt that, I mean, I think some people felt, okay, so we've got an 19 car, so, but that building and the uses for that building is much broader. And when we wrote the grant, we knew, when we went into writing the grant, that the building was not going to survive if we did not have an elevator or some kind of. And so that's why we did it. And then with COVID hitting just one year after, that was all in there. And the other thing, just, it's not a criticism because it's just reality, as we, you know, you always write a grant, and people come in, and they do as much as they can, and at some point, you have to cut back some things because it's too expensive. And one of the things that we had to cut back on was the driveway draining kind of thing. It was just, and that is one of the, I think, the issues now. But I think that there are ways we can move around that with some people who can't quite walk up that area and with the front, but it just needs a little more TLC. And there are some of us who, even though it's 12 years later and we're 12 years older, we think that we'd like to help with that.
Sandra, any input? As the acting manager, I know that for a while, you know, Margaret took it over, or we hired someone, she left, Margaret ended up taking it back. There was a bit of a time lag. Sandra came in, so it's really been one of these pushed-around items. But Sandra, as the current manager, I mean, what are your thoughts? What are you thinking about this?
I mean, I did meet with Kristen, we talked about some of it. There are, you know, some things that would be great, marketing and website are things that I'm not strong in, so getting help with that would be great. We do have a lot going on currently in eighteen seventy that are weekly, or consistently happening. You know, like, once a month, the woodworkers meet, there is a dance class every Thursday, the rec department uses it, just about every day, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday. We have had a few weddings, dance recitals are a big one we've been having, a lot of smaller dance, dancing schools have their recitals there. Birthday parties, the scouts are now using it for the pancake breakfast and some of their meetings. So there is still activity going on there. I know that, like, when I was trying to book my daughter's shower, which is how I ended up with the job, I was trying to reach someone to book it, and that was when Margaret was doing it, and she just had a lot on her plate. So when I took it over, it was kind of just, a few binders were handed to me, without a lot of instruction.
Okay. And, yeah, obviously, we very much appreciate you stepping in and helping. I know that we also worked to clean out one of the rooms, or two of the rooms downstairs as well. So when you come up the big concrete stairs, it's where the police station was. In there, that Sandra and I had gone through, and others had gone through, that it was just junk. That were an old broken desk, that you even couldn't even pull the drawers out, so out it went with that. So, you know, trying to give it a little more space, you know, Sandra had commented, when there's, people need to change, they would go downstairs and change, and then just scoot right back up, you know, the stairs on the, on the other side, which was nice. And I know, you know, on the ADA study, there are some things that we'll be working on. I went through the assessment for the town hall, and gave a list of, I'll call them minor items, that maybe are facilities guy, with the, obviously, permission of Fred, and scheduling of Fred could fix, you know, things around the windows, and looking at heating mechanisms. So the basic stuff, we could take care of. You know, the much, the much broader ones of the giant concrete stairs, what are we gonna do with them? You know, and the driveway. Those will need a little bit more time.
The backhoe that's parked in the driveway, is that, I don't know if something's being worked on there, but that's the Bullard House.
Yeah, it's, it's, well, the Bullard House and the eighteen seventy town hall are kind of sort of related.
Yeah, I just didn't know what the backhoe that's parked fit.
Oh, the backhoe is for the Bullard House, we promised not to be taking anything down on the town hall. Maybe the elevator, just saying. No, I should probably remind people that I am absolutely kidding, because that will be all over the news, that Peg's bringing in the backhoe to take down the elevator. So, if there is like a private event, and you have a public event, who gets first dibs, is it first one who calls? How does that work?
Well, I've been told that if I have a paying customer, I boot a non-paying customer.
Okay.
That's how I've been working things, because that's what I was told to do.
Okay.
I mean, like, the library has booked quite a few things with me coming up, and there was a, I think, a recital or something over the weekend, I had to boot them from that Saturday, because I had a paying customer coming in. I feel terrible when I do it, but that's what I was told to do, so it's kind of, because I know the whole point is, well, that it was supposed to be sort of self-sustaining, but I'm not sure that's a feasible thing, honestly.
Well, we keep trying to make it self-sustaining.
No, but I think it's one of the things that having a committee to work out those type of policies, because I think both of those are, I've heard complaints both directions, where they're a paying gig, and then someone says the town has precedent, and you have to tell someone to rent the space, they can't have it anymore. Having a reputation, having a space that's canceled off from underneath you, doesn't make you want to rent there. And so, trying to find ways where, you know, you can negotiate some of those things. Some things are, like, if the library had an event that they had publicized for a while, and then suddenly, three days ahead of time, you're booting them, that would be bad, and I don't think Sandra would do that either, but, you know, I think a committee could do those things. I think there are some gray areas, so I just, with some good faith all around, figure out how to go through, you know, that Sandra still reports to the, to the town administrator, but not the committee, but the committee should have some ability, some guidance. And assuming that, Kristen, you basically get to be the arbiter of anything that, any messiness that happens, I think it's a great idea.
Wagon, paper, scissors, yeah.
Yeah.
As all, well, and I think you raise a really good point, and I'm wondering with this sort of bumping, if you will, of events, if we set maybe a timeframe on it, like, you know, nobody can be bumped within a week or two before the event, or, I'm not really sure. Something where we give someone enough time to find a different venue. Because as Scott points out, if you've got someone coming in from the library that reserved that, you know, it's a push and pull, right? But I don't like the idea of, you know, necessarily bumping people, and maybe that's something we just need to have a broader conversation about. And I see this working well, and, you know, like I said, I've talked to Sandra, and talked to Evy and Pat, and the folks who were previously on the committee. And I think that, you know, the willingness of the committee to lend itself to marketing, and the website, and some of those other, you know, avenues that could potentially drum up more business, would be a wonderful addition. Obviously, in terms of Sandra being the manager, that structure would remain in place, and, you know, Sandra would report to the town administrator, Sandra would handle the money, and, you know, basically, that would run as it's running now. But I see this, you know, as being able to be a great addition to what we're already doing.
So Kristen, I had to, I think when we met with all of you recently, I did speak to you afterwards about, perhaps, as the policy board, the select board would take a look at what we have in place right now, and see whether any updates are needed or necessary to any of the documents that we have in place right now.
Yes, and I realize Sandra, and we were talking about perhaps making some updates to the contract. I think it was actually back in February, when budget season started getting heated up, and that kind of got passed to the side momentarily. But I do think that we should get back to that, and bring that document back to the board for review and discussion.
And then we can, we can clarify, I think, a little bit better, the bumping, or whatever you want to call it.
Because, I mean, that, obviously, you have experience with renting nineteen carter, and the stuff that was done prior to the COVID already there, I think having sort of the volunteer committee for like, the eighteen seventy town hall committee to look at those, propose some changes to it, would probably, would make me in a better position, because I, I mean, I would have opinions, but I'd like to hear some people who are sort of on the ground doing it, before I put it in my stuff, because they probably know better, and would stop me from making mistakes.
Well, we'd be happy to be that support group with Sandra, so we can take a look at the documents, and obviously, we did the ORE documents back in two thousand eight, so we can look at those, we can look at how they've morphed, and we can do research from other organizations in other towns, and work together, and propose that to you, so that you don't have to do all that work.
Yep.
And, yes, working with Sandra and working with Kristen, I think that would be perfect.
Yeah.
And just as an anecdote, I'm on the committee for the crap there that we do every year, and that's, that's a big thing. And people love coming to that building.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
You know, they just say, we love having the crap there in this old building.
Yeah.
And people, they come. They come, they get in the building, they get up the elevator, they, of course, they can never find the elevator, even though you have a tent sign.
Right, 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 right.
Right. That'll be agenda number one, work on signage.
Signage.
So we're happy to help in that way, just support, help work out.
Does that sound good, Kristen?
Yeah, so
Absolutely.
Yes.
So what would be next steps? I mean, you're looking for an approval from us tonight to create the committee, and then you go away? Don't go away, but you would go away, and then come back to us with
Suggestions.
More detailed plans?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we would need to draft a, what I like to call a composition, a charge of the committee, which would be how many members are, you know, on the committee, and then a more, you know, and the charge is essentially there, that's already been written out by Evy and the folks who are interested in, you know, starting this up. But I guess, though, the one thing I'm realizing as we're talking, is we didn't really talk about how many members would be on the committee, you know, and if the terms and those kinds of things would be just an ad hoc committee, or would we actually do annual reappointments, those types of things. So, I think that's something we could, we could flesh out a little bit, and bring back to the board for approval.
Okay.
Yeah, but, I mean, I, at least I am in favor of this happening, although we have some sort of, you know, details to work out, but if a group of people who are suggested as committee members got together and wanted to start scheduling time with Sandra, and passed their knowledge on to what they did to help make it a success in twenty eighteen, so she had more resources, I wouldn't stand it that way.
And I don't want to slow it down either, so I should have asked, actually, if Evy and Pat, or anyone else who I can't see if they're there, might have some suggestions on that composition or terms. I'm trying to remember how it works the last time, and I'm just drawing a blank.
That's because you weren't here, Kristen.
Yeah, I mean, there is no one here, and yes, you weren't here, so.
That's fair. Well, you should send me a lot of documentation that I reviewed, but I, there's a lot going on in my brain.
I almost want annual appointments, just so that we remember that we have one, and who's on it, and
That's what we did, annual appointments. And I, I mean, I don't know if this is possible, but I would propose that we just do these four, because we've already agreed to be on it.
Yep.
And it could be four up to ten, can you do something like that, four up to, or whatever number? But I imagine someone like Paul McKilk, he's willing to join, I'd like to get someone from historical, you know, but if we could just have these four to start with.
The founding members?
The refounding members.
The refounding members. We can get you a T-shirt for that, refounding.
You know, you don't want too big of a committee, because you can't ever
Right.
You could always, you could always pull someone in for some purpose.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, if Paul has, you know, if he has background in, well, he does, in, you know, construction, or whatever, you know, you know, it'd be nice, you could, I'm sure you'd be able to pull somebody in for help.
So, just to make it easy, make the four starters, and then
Yep.
Annual appointment, I think, before for us, and we would work with Sandra, and Kristen, of course, as you said, Sandra reports to Kristen, so we're just support.
I know.
We're just
And Kristen can bring back whatever you're doing.
Or they can.
Or you can come and share it with us, yeah.
Because we do love to.
I don't want to slow them down, I think we're at the, well, actually, we're into summer, I keep forgetting it's almost July. But I think it's a great time for this to get going. As I said to Evy, I wish it's something that I had had more time to focus on before, but with everything else going on, unfortunately, that one just hadn't risen to the top, so I certainly don't want to slow them down. I'm comfortable with the annual appointments, and, you know, I agree that the number may be on the smaller side, but, you know, it is a group working together, it's not like you're necessarily taking a lot of
And you have Sandra, too.
Votes on things, where you'd need an odd number of people, or anything like that. So I would be open to the, you know, four up to ten, if that seems to work for the board.
I think we start with the four, and see where it goes.
Because it's a select board-created committee, and so if we wanted to change the numbers, it's just involved to change the numbers, and we could change it when we added someone else to the committee. So, I think that, I would then make a motion that we propose, that we do an eighteen seventy town hall committee, with the sort of charge as outlined in what was presented to us tonight, with annual appointments to, Dee, what is the normal, like, is it July, May first?
Yeah, let's do July first. Let's just do July thirty, yeah.
July one.
But, but it, you know.
Six thirty, July one.
Yeah, so annual appointments, then, we appoint these four people, Mary Rainton, and Bob McDab, Evy Duke, and Pat Smith, as the starting members officially as of July first.
Okay, all right, second. All right, lots of discussion, any more questions, hearing none, you like that, just, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard, ladies, thank you so much. And honestly, if there's anything that you need, come back, anytime, we're here.
We're so excited about the building, about the center of town, about all the
The center, we're trying to get the center hall.
Yeah, yeah, and we really, really need that building back online even more than we have, so it's been great having Sandra.
It is built, they will come.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sandra, appreciate you too, very much.
Question for you, I know we just sort of touched on it, we didn't go back to it at all, the booting of the store, however we want to call it, you know, double booking. I know, like, you have opened it up to all town committees who use the building at no charge, but it becomes, I need, you know, some guidance as to, someone mentioned a timeline of a week, four, and then can't cancel somebody.
I think that makes a
What do you think is appropriate?
Right, I think that makes a great sort of first topic for you and the advisory committee, come up with something that seems to feel good, that helps make people want to market there, but also still makes it usable for town stuff as well.
Yeah, we'll make a strategic plan, Sandra, we're gonna make a good plan, and we're gonna present it to Kristen, and
Okay. And Sandra, you'll get the eighteen seventy committee a list of who's in there now and when?
Sure, they need that.
Yeah.
Well, whatever.
Sandra, we'll be in touch about setting up a meeting, how's that?
Okay.
Feel free to use the eighteen seventy town hall for that meeting.
Can we meet for free?
You can meet for free, not a problem.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you, ladies, thank you, Sandra.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, zipping down on the agenda, we are back down to general department updates, police and fire, fire Mike and police Eric, come on down. Welcome, gentlemen.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you both.
Good to be seen.
Okay, all right, whichever one wants to start first.
I was pretty quick.
Go for it.
All right. Month of May, the department handled thousand seventy-nine calls for service, including eighteen cases with criminal charges, twenty-one motor vehicle crashes, eleven reported of injuries, hundred motor vehicle stops, and forty-eight citations issued. CSX has been planning, planning the railroad crosser in tears on West Street, Five Corners, DPW, fire department, myself, have been working together, formally planning to get signage, as well as areas ready for the job, which we now know is gonna be this Wednesday. Mass DOT has been excellent in helping us, they've put it on another five, was it five oh one sites, Mass Trucker site, just stating that sixty-two eastbound and westbound will be closed. So, I'm sure it's gonna be far from perfect, but I think we're definitely well-prepared for this coming week. They have said it could take up to seventy-two hours, we're hoping for forty-eight. So, they've booked detail officers for forty-eight hours, so it looks like they're pretty optimistic of getting that done, so, that's that. Let's see, May twelfth, Officer Scott Davis assisted the town of Northborough, just over our town line, in Lyman Road, for a large party with a possible weapon shown, as we've seen from the news. The outcome was not great for that party, but we were fortunate to have Officer Davis there, utilizing his paramedic skills, and, you know, quickly addressed the patient, although it wasn't the outcome we wanted. Officer Lima and McDonald have started their field training, both have attended a three-day course, serve an officer held by MPDC, and will be going for price dimension training, which was actually last week. So, they're well on their way, have expanded their work for the month of July, under the new reform, we need twelve weeks of field training, so we're trying to get the hours in. So, you'll see them a lot more in July, working, working a lot more shifts. As far as the AC, I did request it from her, she had an issue with her Microsoft Word, she said she'll get it to me, and of course, I'll word that right up to you. Radios, finally, the bill has been awarded to Green Mountain, and they are scheduling with two-way communications to do phase one and two at the same time. So we're hoping, you know, we're hoping by the end of August, they're technically giving us an earlier date, but by the end of August, we'll be phenomenal.
Nice.
Can we do a ribbon cutting for a tower radio?
If someone's gonna swing off the tower, and come through and cut the ribbon.
You do a ceremony of first message, or something, that would be decided to do. Someone stands in front of a tower they've never been able to hear, police or fire receives a message.
Yep.
Oh, and I just want to add, too, what happened this morning, we did advertise for the Hope position, we did get five candidates that passed the PAT. We had an interview panel of civilians, as well as police, we rated all the candidates, there was one selected, we are doing a background check at this time. Does not have the academy, but now that the MOA is signed, I'm due to hire another one for January first, so I may flip them, I may make this one, get the academy in next January, and, or November, whenever, I think it's December, January, is the next, the next local one's gonna start. They're starting Boylston in two weeks, and it's impossible to get them into that. So it'll be five and a half months from now, they'll start another one in Boylston. And so now, with the MOA signed, I can, I can tweak up our advertisement, and advertise what we offer, and hopefully, fingers crossed, get academy-trained personnel to start it, so.
Very nice. Any questions? What is, through Five Corners, it's just you close your eyes, and the person with the crappiest car goes first. I mean, so do we have any idea on the amount of traffic that truly comes through that, that now will be the shushing up Derby, or up Ball Hill, and both down Linden?
I'm gonna guess, maybe between ten and twelve thousand cars a day.
Okay.
I think half of those will find alternate routes.
Is this just a two-day thing, did you say?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two or three.
Open.
Yeah. Up to three. Up to seventy-two hours. So, completely one hundred percent closed. Like, not, not like at the other day because, you know, emergency vehicles can get through. One hundred percent closed.
Okay. So, where are you stopping them coming the other way?
So, for westbound traffic, they'll be detoured up Coburn and down Randall.
Okay.
And then for eastbound traffic, they'll be directed up Derby to Linden. There'll be signs at sixty-two and seventy, all truck traffic, to use one forty to two ninety. A sign on four ninety-five, south to two ninety, that will state use two ninety to one forty. And a sign southbound prior to sixty-two, take two ninety to one forty.
And when trucks totally ignore you and are fully loaded and try going up Derby and down Linden, will you be there to redirect them or just let them go?
There'll be detail officers out there. Yeah. Yeah, a lot of detail officers out there. Yeah. We have to, we have to turn them around. Yeah. So, you know, hopefully, we can get them down and up over, you know, since they did Lincoln over, it makes it easier. We can.
Oh, just turn around. Oh, that's true because they don't, you can't come through.
Yeah. Yeah, the only intersection, no way. But the new intersection, yes.
Okay.
Hey.
Yes, Kristen.
I just wanted to add that this is the culmination of well over three months' worth of work on behalf of the chief and Fred and a gentleman from Clinton who likes to call regularly, and Dee, and myself, to put pressure on CSX to go out and fix the tracks. Just for those who are listening, we can't touch them. So, we have been getting complaints from folks. And unfortunately, there was really nothing we could do. The pop holders are in the tracks. And, you know, frightened his death to, you know, try to see what we could do around the tracks. But really, when it's federal railroad land, you don't want to touch that. There's just too much liability there. So, we actually also worked with Lori Tripphan's office to put some pressure on CSX to get this done. But I have to say, it was like moving a mountain. So, I'm really happy to see that it's finally happening. Hopefully, we won't have the piles of hubcaps and, you know, rims and all kinds of things that we were starting to see people losing and driving on the wrong side of the road. You know, creating potential head-on collision situations because it was getting pretty dangerous down there.
Best of luck. Two days. Any other questions for Chief Shatner?
There's a circus in town that said that there was going to be coordination of complaints of the warranty. Have you received any complaints about the circus?
Zero. Zero complaints.
Good.
And I say, I drove by one evening at like eight-thirty or so, and I think the circus took it seriously. I mean, I could hear them when I was in their parking lot. But even out on Donaldland Boulevard, I couldn't hear it. And I stopped in Riverwood West, in Ridge, and I was happy. It's very happy to have nothing to hear. I'm hoping I didn't get a bad time because I didn't sit for the entire circus in it. But, we're good.
And they've been great to deal with as far as from an inspection standpoint and stuff and everything. They're very professional. We've gone down there a couple of times just through the show, just to make sure things going smoothly. And things seemed around very smoothly there. No issues that we've seen, and we haven't gotten any complaints either.
Nice.
I mean, I think since this is their second year, I think they found a spot in a time they like. And so, my guess is they want to be nice to neighbors so they can continue to come back. So, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Chief McQuillen.
All right. Well, for the month of May, we did sixty-five responses. We had thirty EMS calls, eleven motor vehicle accidents, which seemed a little high, fifteen alarm activations, two gas leaks, two calls to assist the PD, went mutually aid four times and had one smoke scare. We had our fire prevention report that I have in there where the inspection stayed pretty much consistent with, unfortunately, just one home safety check as those have kind of fallen in popularity at the moment. But we're going to try to get back out and canvass the town and get people to get signed up for those. The call volume remained steady for us. We had several serious accidents on four ninety-five in the month of May and a couple of pretty serious medical calls in town as well. Luckily, I'm happy to report, we had no major fire incidents going on in town other than a couple of small gas leaks. The fire watch at the Berlin Memorial School has finally ended. The acceptance test was completed on May sixth. The fire pump and the sprinkler system passed. Unfortunately, we discovered at that time that the viral system had a failure of some electronics, which meant the fire alarm system no longer worked. That took about two additional weeks. But as of May twenty-second, it was a hundred percent repaired and back, and the details finally came to an end. The month of May, we had thirty-four unfilled shifts in the fire EMS department, and that numbered averaged about a little over one shift a day that was open. So, we're starting to manage that as we come into the warmer months with people and stuff and trying to get positions filled. Training for the month of May was focused on forest response and water supply, basically the operations tactics and strategies for deployment of equipment and personnel into the woods and getting equipment to distant locations. In EMS, we cover pediatric emergencies and resources available for treatment of those patients. I also have two of my newest call firefighters that are in the Call Ball program through the Fire Academy and stuff. And that's about a six-month program, but they'll have their level one and level two completed at that time, which will be good. Lieutenant Polino, firefighter Galaro, and myself participated in a two-day conference on fire prevention and code compliance. Topics included dealing with hoarding conditions in residence, enforcement, excuse me, enforcement of large-scale wood frame construction projects. And probably the biggest one was the electric battery fires and storage systems that we're experiencing across the country. It's kind of like gearing up for those and seeing the rapid response of how fire, quickly those fires actually do spread. Some of the initiatives, just again, highlighting the home safety check program that's available to any resident in town. Please give a call to the station to ask for Lieutenant Polino or Abby, and we'll set up an appointment to get into your house. Just covering again, CSX will be replacing the tracks. So, coordinating that with the police department, we expect some delays. And I'm making sure our mutually aid partners for the ALS programs and also for the mutually aid ambulances know where they're going in case they have to come. I'm happy to report to receive another grant through the state for the safe program and the senior safe program. Two thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars is for the student safe program, which gets us into the schools to work with the kids on the awareness of fire and education. There's another one thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars, and that goes towards the seniors for us to be able to assist with like the file of life and some of the other programs for the seniors. So, that will be something that we'll keep going for this year and put towards that initiative. October fifth will be open house for two thousand twenty-four. We've had a bunch of planning meetings on that, and we have some really good ideas to enhance our program and show some new things this year. So, there's more to come down that as we get closer, as we're kind of going an advertising committee to get out there and let people know and get notices out and kind of gear up for that. So, please save the date because October fifth, it's going to be from eleven to four. And then the last bit of news that I have is that, as you guys are probably aware, but everybody in town, the first fire dog we had, which was Lily, passed away on seventh.
Oh.
So sorry.
Yeah. Kind of a sudden thing. It was, it was not expected. It leaves a hole. I apologize, getting a little choked up. But I want to thank the people that have come out to offer support and give condolences. She, she had a great year here at the fire department and the town. Loved having her. I'm going to miss her. Leaves a huge hole. But, yeah, we'll move on. But thank you to everybody who reached out, sent cards, and stopped by to see me. So, that's the fire department report.
All right. Well, I would like to personally thank Chief and his staff. So, last month, I had my boiler inspected. Two days later, the alarm goes off. Of course, stop laughing. Of course, I panic, and I run to find out where the cat is, making sure that she's safe. Never mind me, but the cat needs to be safe. Opened some windows, debated, is it easier to call or to run down the station? Got in the car and ran down the station. Abby grabbed Chief for me, told him what was going on. Much to my surprise, I thought they would come up in the little pickup truck. Up came the big, giant, honking, seven-hundred-foot truck with a police escort there on Lyman Road. There I was. They were wonderful. They went in, they checked the boiler. It was a low reading for that, and they said, we suggest you call your oil company back. I came back, I called them. They came over. There was a broken valve that was emitting the CO2. So, for anyone who has any questions as to whether this program works, it definitely works. It was my peace of mind, Chief's peace of mind, and the folks that he sent up. So, yeah, thanks. Thanks for the big honking truck for that.
I could have told you because when I had a brush, or I had a chimney fire years ago and called and just said, you know, there's just a little bit of smoke coming in the room.
Up came the big truck.
Yeah. Up came the big truck and maybe a couple of police cars and.
Yep. Yep. So, no, and of course, I had one resident in town who I passed a few days later and got the, so what was going on at your house? I saw the truck going up Lyman. I'm like, oh, seriously? So, but no, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
That's where, you know, nobody likes seeing the big trucks come, but that's where all the equipment is that we have in order to mitigate the problem when we find it. So, yeah, we kind of have to bring those in tow sometimes.
Yeah, no.
We can also mention today, we got notification, we received a thirty-two thousand dollar grant through Neshova Regional Dispatch District for our camera system for the building.
Nice. Oh, good.
Yeah. It was something that Chief McQuill and I have been teetering, putting on capital planning, but we tried the grant route first and we got it.
Yep.
So, now it's ninety-nine point nine percent of the work was done by Aunt Camaro. We met with the company, went over the extreme needs of the building. So, it looks like we're going to be modernizing our camera system.
Good.
Without touching tax base.
Nice. That's great.
So, will you tell people-wise for your, for your team?
Yeah, a little bit. We've had some transitions of people that have gone full-time in other departments and stuff, which has limited to how much they can do per diem work for us. So, that's what's kind of drawing, I think, the lack of shift coverage that we've had. I will say, we've had, we've instituted a couple of what we call call groups so that every, there's, there's four different call groups. And every night, there's a different one that's on to cover second medicals, or if there isn't a crew that's on, they can cover the first medical call that comes in. So, so far, that's been working. The call staff has been doing a really good job of covering that. I'm looking at, I am bringing another full-time position into the department to start kind of moving in that direction with them to be able to cover some more. And I'm also going to look to see if I can grab some additional per diem staff that I can grab off of that list as well to use to cover shifts.
Any next steps on the bunkhouse?
The second floor renovation?
Mm-hmm.
So, right now, we've got, we, we went out with an RFQ that Kristen had sent out, and we got the responses back for that. And we just need to rank the companies so that we can choose an architect to work with us to finish the drawings that we can get to Assavet for. We should have that all done by October thirty-first, that is when it's all supposed to be completed, which works out well with Assavet because we can get them and all the trades a copy of the engineered drawings at that point. And that'll give us an idea of what we need for materials and stuff to be able to go to talk to some of the companies about whether we can get any donations or any reduced cost on items. But that's, that's pretty much where we're at. The last discussion that I had with Wayne Colson, who is the director for the program there and stuff, he was all on board with it. He's very excited about it and stuff and wants to see it happen. He opened up for us to come down to South Burley. Just finished the, I can't remember, was it community center or the senior center that they just redid down there, but just to see the quality of the work that the kids did and stuff. So, they're, they're very much on board with it. But I think that's pretty much where we're at. And I forgot, Kristen is actually online if she wants to add to anything on the RFQ.
Anything, Kristen, on the, the.
We're moving along. It's, I'm glad that we received two responses. I think that one appears slightly more responsive than the other, but we have to evaluate them based on the designer selection procedures and the criteria that was set forth in the RFQ. So, stay tuned. We're trying to get that done and move forward.
Cool. And before the both of you go, thank you so much for your assistance at town meeting.
Oh, yes.
Last Monday. I know it wasn't easy as the lines were snaking out and around and around the building. And you were doing your best to get everybody seated. So, thank you both, and thank you for calling more of your team in to, to help.
I'm glad we did not have to postpone it or change the meeting.
Oh, yeah. We would have made you, made that announcement. So, just saying. Mm-hmm. Any other questions for Chief or Chief?
No, thank you very much.
All right. Awesome. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Next up is TA. So, Kristen, you're up for your report.
All right. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Good. So, I thought I would start with just a brief recap of the school budget special town meeting for those who don't go on Facebook and couldn't be there. If those, if for those of you that are not aware, we do have a school budget with the Berlin, Boylston Regional School District, which represents a compromise between the district and the finance committee to close the seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollar budget gap. What that amounts to is on the town side, it was a raise in appropriate of an additional just shy of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in taxation and adding another one hundred and sixteen thousand in free cash, which will be adjusted at town meeting and applied to offsetting a police officer expense that is normally funded through public safety stabilization account. So, that provided a total of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars, or one-half of the deficit in town funds. Subsequently, the school committee voted to reduce Berlin's assessment by the same, three seventy-five, seven ninety. And the special town meeting voted to approve this compromise. As the district FY twenty-five budget has now passed, no additional town or district-wide meetings are required, I am happy to report. So, we move forward with FY twenty-five. In that vein as well, I am meeting with the council on aging tomorrow to seek input on what they are looking for in a new COA social services director. Obviously, the police union contract was many months of work, and I'm really happy that we were able to get that signed this evening. And we have also posted for the youth services library assistant position. Chiefs just went over the public safety building, second floor construction and radio project. So, I will skip to that. But I have also begun reviewing a design proposal from engineering firm Howard Stein Hudson for the complete streets project. If you recall, we were awarded a half a million dollars from Mass DOT in funding for the center area around the church on Woodward, sixty-two, Carter Street, to work on what is known as complete streets, which addresses parking sidewalks, bicycle lanes, and pedestrian access. So, the good news is Howard Stein Hudson is on the list of preferred vendors with Mass DOT, so we can move forward with design of the project. We will be having community meetings and getting stakeholder input because obviously, there are a lot of key and critical organizations and housing in that area. We want to make sure we get input from the residents and those who have businesses and organizations in that area. So, to that end, we will be starting off with a stakeholders meeting to address the concerns, questions, and suggestions of the immediate residents and businesses, organizations in the area. Also, I submitted a ninety thousand dollar ADA grant for website upgrades and accessibility improvements to town buildings, including the library, municipal offices, and eighteen seventy town hall. Hopefully, we'll hear in the fall. Last time it was January, and they said use the money by June. So, hopefully, we'll be on a little bit faster time plan, which would make things a lot easier for all of us. I'm also involved, it seems like union negotiations never end, in negotiations with the dispatchers at Neshova Valley Regional Dispatch District. Their contract expires the end of this month. So, as part of the admin board, we are in the process of negotiating their contract, and that is going well. I also started having a discussion regarding the bidding and procurement requirements for the South Commons Field renovation project. I also, in accordance with the vote of the select board, met with representatives from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and requested a department opinion regarding the Berlin, Boylston Regional School District's FY assessment for the town of Berlin. They are working on looking at the assessment itself and making sure that everything looks accurate. And they did request some documentation, which I have submitted to them as well, and they will be getting back to us shortly. Finally, still working on Bullard House and eighteen seventy town hall drainage. Bullard House and eighteen-seventy Town Hall drainage, and also starting the process of acquiring Parcell Six A and Six B at River Run, down at River Bridge, in accordance with the Maytown meeting vote. So, lot going on. Not bad.
Any questions for Kristen?
Um, when would, do you have a date for the meeting for Complete Streets?
Not yet. We're just designing the proposal right now, so.
Okay.
Um, I, they've sent a proposal and I wanted there to be a stakeholders' meeting upfront, so we're, we're just in the process of refining the proposal that they submitted.
Okay, 'cause I think it, my suggestion would be that there be some kind of, uh, maybe a, an overview or a, if you could, um, give a visual of the Complete Streets to people who particularly live around there. Um, and, you know, that could be at the meeting, I suppose.
Well, that's why we don't have anything right now.
Right.
So, we are literally starting from scratch. So, the stakeholders' meeting was to get input from the immediate abutters to the project, and then they would start with a conceptual design, and then bring that conceptual design to a public, uh, open meeting where anyone could come and provide feedback.
Yeah, I, I do think that, you know, Complete Streets is kind of a vague way to describe what we're gonna be doing, and so that's why I was a little concerned.
As, yeah, as soon as we have conceptual.
Yeah, my power died. My laptop just died. Hey, welcome to technology.
Oops.
Kristen, can you hear me?
All right, Scott, well, I guess you're gonna start, uh, you're gonna log in and pick up?
I gotta pick up? I don't have much left, like, otherwise.
Well, I know.
Hello?
Is your power cord with your phone?
My phone is in my pocket, my power cord is sitting on the table.
Well, my power cord fit yours?
I don't know, I have a Dell.
I do too.
All right.
Hey, Kristen, we're, we're, we're working on things. Peg's laptop ran out of power.
Peg's laptop ran out of power.
Uh, you're, you're, I can hear you now.
Nope, I have a different.
As long as, uh.
Well, let's try this, hang on.
Okay. You still there, Kristen?
I am.
Good. We've just switched to my laptop, which is at like twenty-five percent power.
That was a none, right?
Right.
Mine's at ninety-six, but I don't know.
We'll go, we'll go to, uh, Chris is next. Uh, uh, you were saying, I think we lost you out on some Complete Street stuff.
Oh, um, so, we definitely will have some large conceptual design plans, so folks can get a sense of everything that'll be happening down there. But it is literally like a soup to nuts, you know, starting from.
Recording in progress.
Parking, paving, um, you know, sidewalks, bike lanes, making sure there's connectivity, like people can actually walk that whole area, which the sidewalks will be a really key component of. But there's a number of different ways that you can do, like the traffic pattern or places you can put the parking. So, that's why you start with different conceptual designs, and then you have a public meeting to get input on, you know, what people think is the best way to go.
Yeah, I, I, um, I think I was asking.
Yeah, I think you're, I don't know if you can hear me, but someone's muted, so I can't hear anyone.
We, we can hear you. Hold on a second.
Okay.
Do you wanna unmute your mic? Unmuted.
So, who's got the mic?
Go, I do.
Okay. Um, sorry, Kristen. I think it was me who, um, was having an issue with, what is it that we're, what are, what are we visually gonna change down in the center of town? And that's why I was asking.
Oh, okay. Did that help clarify?
It did, and I'm sure that, um, others, I'm probably not the only one that, you know, didn't have a visual of what does Complete Streets mean. So, yeah.
No, and I've gotten a lot of questions, Chris.
Yeah.
So, I think once we have those really preliminary conceptual design plans, and we can have a, a, a larger community meeting, I think that will really help folks visualize, um, you know, what we're talking about.
Okay.
All right, awesome. All right, more to come. All right, next up, before everyone's laptop dies, is old business, discussed change of town office hours. So, Kristen or Dee? I don't know if you wanna.
Turn that over to Dee.
All right, Dee.
Well, um, one of the questions that you all asked when we came last time with this is that, um, would other offices that are not currently open, uh, late one evening, if they would join us? And do you have all the feedback from them in your meeting folder? Um, it was a resounding no, um, but we still do propose to, uh, close on Fridays and, uh, have a late night on Wednesdays.
Questions, comments for Dee?
I. Go ahead, do you have any?
I was gonna say, I, I don't think I have a problem with it proceeding, 'cause I think it's also changeable if it turns out not to work the way we thought it was working. I mean, hours are one of those things that can be changed. Uh, I think it's worthy of an experiment, and, uh, probably, I'll try to remember to put it on my calendar somewhere like six months from now to like have a conversation about how it's going.
Dee, do you see this as just a summer thing or as a forever thing?
Well, it started out as a forever thing. We can certainly do a trial run for just a summer if everyone is more comfortable with that, and then revisit it, uh, you know, before fall starts and see how it's working, see if we have any resident feedback.
Yeah, 'cause summer, I can imagine that would probably be slower, 'cause everyone's starting to scoot into their once-a-month.
Summer mode.
Meetings, yeah. So, probably in September, when we all start to get busy and it's budget time, and we all need to be around, that maybe we look at it. But, um, Kristen, do you have any, uh, additional items that you want to, uh, talk about or propose?
Sure. Uh, you know, the biggest thing that I noticed is that the foot traffic is relatively light on Fridays, but for those folks who come in, I would say probably at least fifty percent of them, we can't help because the offices are closed. So, I think there's a genuine confusion when you have the town open, but only two offices open on Fridays. So, I think part of my original thinking when this, you know, was discussed was, can we eliminate the confusion by saying, "We're closed on Fridays," so we don't get people, you know, clipping it down here to see the assessor or the building department, or, you know, any other department that's closed. And if employees wanted to work on Fridays to have that, you know, quiet time and get work done, I don't see a problem with that. In fact, I see myself doing that, because personally, I actually really like Fridays for the quiet time. Um, but, you know, that's, we could be, have some flexibility in there. A, a lot of workplaces, especially municipalities, have gone to close Fridays. You saw the list in your folder. Um, especially smaller communities, it's just not really worth it to try to pay everybody to be there on a Friday. As you've seen, we already have only two offices that are open, so I, I think it's worth a trial run. Um, I mean, as I agree with Dee, the idea was to do it permanently, but if the board is more amenable to doing it short-term, I don't see an issue with that. Um, and I think the nice thing about having the Friday is, you know, if somebody needs to make up something, or they're, you know, is something going on, there's a project, someone needs to work on a little extra, they actually have a day where they can focus on something and get some work done, and we're not confusing the public by having folks come in and not be able to get their business done.
I mean, my only one concern about this is for those folks that are working forty hours, and I think Scott, you were the one who mentioned this before, does Thursday now become, or does Friday now become Thursday and Friday off, and woo-hoo, I'm gonna work lots of hours in the beginning of the week, and now I get four-day weekends? So, that is one of my concerns. I would assume that since we're all adults and, uh, no one's running down the hall with a time clock to check it in, that we can monitor that, but if that becomes an issue, then that will be dealt with individually, and you don't punish the whole for one that may not, um, care to partake appropriately.
Oh, absolutely. I think we can make that really clear, and I could tell you myself, I worked in a community for eight years that was closed on Fridays, and people really concentrated their work into those four days. The late night was really valued and appreciated by the public. Um, you know, we actually did a, uh, nine-eleven, nine-nine, similar with Tuesdays being the late night. That just happened to work the best, um, you know, there, given everything going on. But, you know, you really, I have to say too, you found that people really buckled down and got their work done. It did cut down on even like, you know, the people that were like, "Oh, it's chin-chat." Like, no, you have to get your work done, and, you know, you have to get it done in four days. And I found that people were really focused and really concentrating. And those three days do really help folks be able to regenerate, get their work done, you know, make their appointments on Fridays. So, you're here Monday through Thursday, and you're not missing things going on during the week. Um, and I, I have to say, it, it worked really well for the eight years that, that I did it.
I, I, uh, don't know that I'm in favor of this. Um, we've hired a lot of new people, um, just in the last year. Um, I don't have a problem with closing it to the public, but if people haven't gotten their work done in the first four days of the week, then I think they should be here on Friday to finish up.
But that's something that you wouldn't know anyways. I mean, if Sally, who works in insert department, is bluffing around during the week and not working, you're not gonna know.
We're all adults, we're all adults, so they should be keeping tabs on.
They should be keeping tabs.
Whether they have their work done, and if they don't, they should be here.
Right, and I would think that that's a department head thing.
Yeah, and, and are they all report through Kristen?
Correct. Well, not all.
Well, the, the ones that are affected by this generally.
Correct.
There's only three offices that are affected.
I have my concerns about the other responses from people who don't.
And they're all basically new, new employees.
Right.
And, and you, you can feel the way you do, and I can feel the way I do, but I, I told Kristen I would not be voting for this.
To me, I think we have to give it the benefit of the doubt, and we have to try, instead of saying, "No." To me, let's try it, let's hear feedback.
This is like a perfect opportunity for people who need, like, um, like my husband said, he goes into work early because he can get work done, 'cause there's nobody bugging him.
Right.
So, you know, if that's the way it's used, perfect.
I, I mean, yeah, there's gonna be things that are gonna need it to be work, get worked out of. "Oh, can I not work Thursday and I'll work Friday?" No, no. So, I, I think, Kristen, probably, I would put some guidelines together and send them out about what you can and can't do, and, yeah, if you found that you're in violation of them, you get penalized, not the entire program. But to me, I would rather try it and not have it work than not try it at all and never know. So, Scott?
Uh, I, non-cash things that make people happy and potentially stay longer in an environment where it's hard to hire and retain employees is a good thing, especially as an experiment. Again, if we find it's not working, we can undo it, just as we did it.
Well, one of the, one of the suggestions I had made to Kristen was that perhaps we wait, like, another six months to a year, um, for the new people that have been hired and, and then propose it.
See, I, I think summer, the slower months are the best time to try it. This is a time where things are generally slower. If it's ever going to work, it's gonna work during the slower seasons.
And let's fast forward, six months is budget, and no one is taking any time off. We'll all be sleeping here.
Hard to go back, though, you know?
Yeah. Well, it's proposed, as this is temporary. This is until, even if you give it till September thirtieth, so you let the, they go through the total summer for July and August, which isn't that scary, and then you go a month back into real world.
Well, let's, go ahead, make a motion.
All right, go ahead.
Let's go.
Could I say one thing?
If I was making the motion, I wouldn't have an expiration date on it. So, so, maybe, Peg, you have to make the motion for me to do it, 'cause I, I would, I have no problem making a motion that we adjust the hours per the, the recommendation from staff, and, and that we try to revisit it in this fall, but that barring an action on our part, that it stays.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna second the motion, but Kristen, you had a, a comment you wanted to pop in?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the hours we were proposing clear, um, 'cause I know we talked about it before, but didn't, I don't think, mention it this time, that we were talking eight to five, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and eight to seven on Wednesdays, 'cause there was concern about the Monday holidays, so we switched that long day to Wednesdays. But I also wanna point out that that's thirty-eight hours.
Right. Until that people are on their own making up, if they're forty hours, they're working the, the extra hours on other, either nights the other days or, or on Friday.
Yep. So, what offices are gonna be open till seven? You said that nobody wanted to do it.
No, external, uh, outside of people reporting to the select, uh, select board. So, Board of Health, Assessor.
Oh, all right. Like, I thought you were just talking about the three departments that, that you were talking about for the having Fridays off.
No, and, and actually, on Wednesday, the clerk's office is already open, and so we, we, basically, we're adjusting some of the other divi, so that we're expecting like the treasurer and, and other public-facing offices to be open at those times.
Just, no, the other offices were, you know, that was part of the challenge, is those other offices were less than thirty hours a week.
Kristen, of the offices that report to you, which ones are open to the public on Wednesday nights?
So, that would be the select board office, the treasurer-collector's office, and then the town clerk's open.
So, Scott, if you wanna, uh, say your motion again?
Uh, that, that we go to the hours that Kristen adjusted, uh, as the public hours for the building, um, for those who, again, those report through the select board, because we have no control of the independent bodies, um, that we're, uh, close to the public basically on Fridays, that gives staff either hours to make up or time to finish projects, uh, without expecting people to drop in.
And this can be changed and modified at any time, per the discretion of the board.
Yep.
Based on, uh, input. Okay. All right, I will second that motion. Uh, any more thing to say? All right, we'll take a vote on it. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
All right, two to one, it passes. All right, good luck. You'll get all the marketing information out to let people know what's going on, and we'll push it around town. Okay, cool.
And, and I hope some of the other, if this works well, that some of the other offices decide that a Wednesday night opening, so that people who work nine-to-five jobs can get and talk to some of the hours. Would be appreciated.
All right, so we are on to new business, and part of our new business is line item transfers. So.
I saw nothing in the folder.
There's three. There's a highway, uh, a part-time and a treasurer-collector, so.
When, I looked again today.
No, they're right here.
Yes, I put them in right before you guys, right when you guys.
Oh, okay.
All right.
I can go through them if you like.
Sure.
Okay, so, the first one we have is a line item transfer for the highway department. It is a two thousand, three hundred, thirty-two dollar and sixty-nine cent shortage in full-time wages due to additional overtime that was needed to complete the paving jobs to be available for the contractors' schedules, that those jobs can get done. The proposal is to take that funding, um, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. The amount requested is four thousand dollars. The balance in the account is two thousand, three hundred, thirty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. So, the request is to take that four thousand dollars out of highway wages part-time, which has over twelve thousand dollars on it.
No problems with you, June?
And then Fiski or twenty-five, we won't need to be doing these part-time to full-time transfers anywhere, 'cause we created one line item for wages, right? 'Cause we've already had.
Just for police and fire.
Just one of my micromanaging things, is that like, a department head should be able to adjust between full-time and part-time, because it didn't change the amount of salary we're, or wages we're paying staff. But I will move that we transfer four thousand dollars from highway wages part-time to highway wages full-time.
Second.
All right, uh, any more comments? Nope. All right, let's take a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, next one up, treasurer-collector?
Yes, so this is a one-week overlap in vacation payout for the former treasurer-collector in the amount of one thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, requesting, again, that come out of part-time wages and supplement the, uh, treasurer-collector's salary line item.
Kristen, could you do those numbers again? 'Cause I'm looking at the, and it says balance fourteen hundred and change, amount requested, balance in account, it gives another amount? Was I just not listening carefully enough when you did that?
Um, that's the expense one. This, this will be, I'm sorry, I may be looking, there's two for the treasurer-collector.
Okay.
There's one for salary and one for expenses.
Okay.
Right. And that's one for salary.
Which one do you want me to do first?
Sa- salary's the one in front of us.
Yep, salary, we're doing.
Okay. Yep, so salary, we need, uh.
Nineteen hundred.
Yep, so salary, we need $1,950 to be moved from part-time Treasurer Collector wages into Treasurer Collector's salary line item for a one-week overlap in vacation payout for the former Treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
Any problems in the back? Nope, all right, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, Kristen, next one?
All right, the next one is a request to move $5,000, also out of the part-time wages for the Treasurer Collector into Treasurer Collector expenses for a number of unforeseen expenses that we were not budgeted for, we have some remaining expenses for the year, which include Harper's, Kelly Ryan, Health Equity, and Odyssey, and as you know, we did receive some assistance, and still are receiving some assistance in doing some reconciliation, that does have to come out of the expense line item, unfortunately, even though technically it was really supplementing having a part-time person there, so we just need to move that funding, over.
So the amount requested is five thousand from Treasurer Wages, Treasurer Collector Wages part-time to Treasurer Collector expenses, correct?
Yeah, yes.
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions, comments, nope, all right, let's vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, next up, we are going to talk about the fourth modification to the River Bridge Development Agreement. Go ahead, Kristen.
I'm really excited that we're here, this was approved at May annual town meeting, it has been executed by the Sennys, and tonight we ask the board to execute it in accordance with the town meeting vote taken on May sixth.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any other discussions? Nope, all right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
If the town meeting approved it, it would be odd of us to decide that we would.
Yeah.
Go against our own motion, that we pushed a town meeting that passed.
Well, you know.
But now we're gonna change our mind.
Weird how things happen, all right, so the next thing up is to talk about the dissolved housing partnership, and Scott, this kinda came from you, so I'm gonna whizz it over to you.
The, the housing partnership in the town of Berlin was created by the select board to help our town sort of oversee and push some better, lower, lower-income housing opportunities, their mandate has almost been entirely subsumed by the Housing Trust that now exists, and so instead of having two different groups working on housing-related issues in town, we're going to have one, and the one that is, the Housing Partnership is the one that survives, just 'cause that's the one entity that's recognized by the state and has other authorities to it.
And those who are on that committee know that we're gonna dissolve it, and they have no issue with it?
I was not part of those conversations, but I believe the answer is yes, LOE's at least I know has been specifically talked to about it, and is, is fine with this, the, the other piece that we'll have to do at some point, and Kristen, I don't know if this is, this will take a town meeting vote, but that on the CPA committee, the Housing Partnership officially has the housing slot on the CPA, even though the Housing Trust is the only one that can spend the money, that's because the Housing Trust didn't exist at that point, so at some point have to do another vote that gives the Housing Trust the seat at the CPA.
And I believe because the, was the CPA committee created by town meeting when the CPA.
I think so.
That's approved?
I think so, yes.
So we probably need to put that on for fall town meeting to have that item amended. I will make a note.
Any other goodness? All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, hearing no other comments, all those in favor of dissolving the Housing Partnership?
Aye.
All right, excellent, whittling on down, we are down to board questions and liaison updates, Scott?
I just wanna confirm with you, Kristen, you also have not received any complaints about the flip circus to the select board or to you?
I have not, Dee, I don't believe you received it either.
No emails, nothing.
Dee has also not, okay.
Okay.
I see that as a good sign.
I went to the flip circus, actually, on Saturday, and I was acutely aware of noise and trying to pay attention, I really barely heard much until I came into the parking lot. It was very well-run, and I think they were certainly trying to be respectful of the neighborhood.
Makes me very happy when sometimes you trust people's good intent, and, and again, I, I thought their long-term, you know, profits align with making the neighbors in the town happy, if they wanna keep coming back, so, good, I'm glad that it worked out that way. That's really all I brought tonight.
Chris?
I attended by Zoom the June eighteenth school committee meeting, they had a sister company of their auditor who was there, and they have proposed to assist the school committee and the town with communication on what both parties need to do to work together on the budget next year, so we should be hearing from them probably in, I, I would not imagine over the summer, because the school committee doesn't meet until the last week of August or something, but we probably will be hearing from them. Also, I was with the understanding that Carol Costello has chosen not to hire the woman who was interviewed by the, for the Finance Director's position, that a group of us had interviewed, and she also did interview the, the woman, but chose not to hire her, so I just thought I'd let you know, that's it.
All right, and I just.
Chris, so we'll.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Peg, Chris, will Michael Wood be staying on then as the interim for now, or do we not know?
I believe he will be, they don't have any other alternative, Carol has actually, had actually contacted MASBO, MASBO, Mass Association of School Business Officers, but they didn't have anyone that she really felt confident in using.
Okay.
So, I'm assuming that he would stay on, or somebody from that group would continue, but since he started, I, I would hope he'd stick it out.
Be determined.
Yeah.
And then the only one that I really have is Concom, a couple of issues that they're dealing with, there was a gentleman who came up and proposed beginning of a trail committee, he had cited that there are overgrown trails, poison ivy roots, anything else on those trails, what people are doing is that they're making their own trail, if the main trail doesn't work, they're making their own trail, so he is looking at trying to get people together to help clean up the trails around town, the next meeting is not until July seventeenth, so probably more to come, and there's some ongoing issues with Highland Ridge, there's an issue with hydroseeding, that it's really not taking, taking hold, that people in the management want individuals to do a lot of the work around their homes, but, well, you really can't do that, moving towards an HOA, so Pat Garner is trying to get in and offer some solution, but not many things are being done, there's issues with the holding, you know, the holding ponds that are there, so that's an ongoing item that is still bubbling up and not going away, but other than that, I got nothing. So, reminder to folks, we are swinging into our every-other-week schedule, which means our next meeting is July fifteenth, followed by July twenty-ninth, and every couple weeks after, so with that, we have no reason for an executive session, can I get a motion to skedaddle?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bye, thank you.